Gentlemen, I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Monday, June 3rd, 2019. Kathleen, could we get a roll call and see who made it through Memorial Day weekend?
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Marks.
Uh-huh.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Euring.
Here.
You have a quorum with Commissioner Marks, absent.
Okay, thank you very much. Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I'm ready to go.
I know you were.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda, please.
I move the agenda be approved as staff recommends with item 5B heard before item 5A.
Get a second?
No, no, you got a second.
This is just approval, when you get to, I'll second that. Okay, all in favor?
Five.
All right. Report on posting the agenda, Kathleen.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 23rd, 2019.
Thank you very, very much. Richard, you gonna talk to us about the rebuild process?
Yes, I'll give you a quick presentation on where we are.
Thank you.
So, just to, some questions that have come around, we've been asked the types and the volumes of applications that we've received. And the purpose of this graphic, which is available because of the meeting on the city's website as well, is to show what it is that the planning department has seen in terms of application, whether it's a temporary housing permit, the volume of those, or a permit for an APR, which would be something where someone wants to add on to the home beyond 10%, or perhaps they want to reconfigure something that requires a discretionary approval. For those types of projects, you do administrative plan reviews. And then the other type of project on here are the planning verification applications. And as you can see, the planning verification application, that's the blue, that's in the back, and the administrative plan reviews are there in the front in the orange color. You can see how the volume of planning applications that have come through are primarily the planning verifications. Folks replacing what they had, and now, in the March timeframe, those planning verifications started to include what they had plus a 10% addition, because that was around the timeframe when the code amendments were processed and adopted by the city council. The numbers really haven't changed here. This is the slide about the debris removal and site clearance. The county, the state program is wrapping up, and that's expected to be finished within the next couple of weeks. And the other number you see that's still ongoing, about 229 sites worth, that's now folks doing a debris clearance on their own without the state. And once again, would just like to reiterate to folks that if they have any questions about scheduling an appointment to meet with staff, if they have questions about what it is they can build, to please contact Andrea Cruz. We have her email on our slides, as well as to call City Hall and use extension 379, and that will get you in touch with her. And this weekend also, staff held Saturday hours. We held pre-designed meetings with approximately about five different folks. We did that between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Saturday. And if there's a, if folks do need services like that, we recommend they call us. However, the majority of folks that we saw were actually expeditors that, you know, could come Monday through Friday. And an upcoming event that we have is the Malibu Safety and Preparedness Exposition. That will be, take place at Tranca's Country Mart on the 15th of June. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Richard, thank you very much. Any questions? Commissioners? Jeff, we think you know. Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move on to. We have one. Norm, you're on.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to, to be able to speak to you. Last week, I attended the Arts Commission, the joint meeting between the Arts Commission and the Safety Commission for the City of Malibu. And the thing that was on the agenda was the act, the county's acquisition of two acres of property that's owned by the city, immediately adjacent to Civic Center Way. The two acres that the county has indicated they're interested in buying is the most valuable two acres of all the property that was acquired by the City of Malibu here recently. What surprised me, a number of things surprised me. First of all, it surprised me that they were buying property when they had sufficient property already. The county already owns property in the Civic Center area, which is sufficient for a fire station. And what surprised me was, first of all, the fire department, the county did not show up to explain why they wanted this two acres. And second, part of the, part of the information that was given at that meeting was that there's no commitment to use the property for a fire station. They might use it for a fire station, or they might use it for something else. So, it's just kind of surprising that they're interested in buying property with no particular intent in mind when they already own property that could easily be used for a fire station or some other use, whatever it is. And the property that they own is a parking lot, which means that it would be very cheap to change into something else. So, those are the things that I, that I learned. And I handed out a, an aerial photograph that, there are five of them up there. I'm gonna hand one to, to Bonnie. So, it seems to me like we don't know what our options are with regard to the property yet. And the county doesn't know what their options are. And so, it's surprising to me that we're entertaining a sale at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. I agree, it was a bizarre meeting. Any other comments?
I just want to make a comment on that. I've never, in my history in the city, gone to three commissions and got the same vote from every single commissioner. It's pretty rare.
I'll pile on there and say, I thought it was, seemed sort of absurd, even farcical, that after the council had unanimously said, let's send this to those joint committees for, to talk about the land use decision and what their expertise could bring to bear on what should go there, to then be told in the meeting, no, we can't talk about other options for the property. This is only about the fire department. So, the whole point of having the joint committees was kind of negated in the first place. So, beyond that, I just wanted to, as a point of news and observation, a couple of us went to the meeting last week with Sheriff Villanueva, and there was some discussion about evacuation and roadblocks and how the procedure on those might be changed or improved. And he said that, in effect, it's gonna be business as usual, i.e. nobody in, no exceptions during roadblocks. And I showed him some stuff that I'd gotten from the former head of the Australian Emergency Services, Craig Lapsley, who by coincidence is, is in town this week, about how they handle roadblocks, and they have more sophisticated sort of tiered, leveled response about who can go through under what circumstances. And I also showed that to Lieutenant C2, and both she and the sheriff kind of nodded politely and sort of affirmatively, but I'm sort of hoping that maybe we can get that discussion a little further. Lieutenant C2 also said that dolphin decals will be honored now, but I don't know that that's necessarily a solution if we have roadblocks manned by, you know, highway patrol from Orange County or something, then people aren't gonna necessarily know what that is. I guess that's my comments. Thanks.
I just wanted to add to that, that I went to that meeting also, and they talked about public safety and crime in Malibu. And he stated that the number-one problem with burglaries was having walls in front of your house, or hedges. And the criminals look for that so they can hop the fence and, and be out of sight. So, one of my pet peeves is the fact that we don't enforce the 42-inch front yard fence, and we have 14-foot hedges everywhere. And he flat-out stated that's the number-one way to get hit by a burglary.
Commissioner Jennings?
And my thought about, about the roadblock situation, it's a defect, if you will, that I look at everything from a lawyer's point of view. And my take on it is that it's largely a liability issue. They let you back in, you get hurt, they're gonna get sued. It's easier just to keep you out.
Rules are made for easy enforcement.
He, by the way, he did say that the dolphin stickers would be honored on a soft closure and not honored on a hard closure.
Yeah. I think a way to go. Commissioner Marks?
Just in kind of response to Commissioner Jennings' comment, I'm just curious, is there a corollary to that, where if you're not allowed back to your property and it's lost, is there any, you know, risk on the other side, just from your perspective? I don't know. Just a thought.
I think that the first danger is the one that they're looking at, and I wouldn't think that, that there would, I wouldn't think there would even be liability if they keep you away from your property.
Right. Okay, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Let's go to Commissioner, Planning Commissioner, staff comments. Anybody else got anything? No?
That's where we were.
That's where we were, okay. I've just got a couple. And one of my favorite topics are friends at Whole Foods. Now, he's got ads all over the place saying they're opening up on June 12th, so I assume that means we've signed off on this stuff. Is that a fair assumption?
We have not signed off. I can only speak for planning, but I don't, I'm not aware that Building Safety has signed off for anything either. They're still going to, there's always last-minute things with, with projects like this, so they're still going through the process.
Steve Sobrov has a lot of things, but he's not dumb. And he wouldn't be advertising this stuff unless he had a fairly good idea that he was gonna get his, he got a nod from somebody, I don't know who that is. But he doesn't have his walls in. The live walls are not in there. Can he get a permit with, an occupancy permit without that?
The, a change was made to the green walls to use vines instead of the succulents, and so that's what's growing in now.
Okay, but there's gotta be, the requirement of the CDP said he's required to provide 22,000 square feet of living green walls. If he's, if he's planting the plants now, when do you think we'll see 22,000 square feet of green walls out of there?
It'll take some time to grow in, and that's, I think we've discussed this before, it's not unusual for landscaping to take a while to grow in.
But that's just landscape. This is required landscaping. This is different.
That's right. It's planted, and it's-
He's gotta have it in there. I believe that's what the permit said.
Well, it's, it calls for 22,000 square feet of green walls, and so that's what's growing in now. It's, they're not currently in-
Living green walls.
Right.
Can I comment?
No, just hang. Let me ask a question. A situation that allows him to open up without putting the green walls in is good for him, right? It solves his problem. What does it do for the residents? Why is that good for the residents to have it go that way?
The landscaping, it will grow in, and that is a permit condition, so-
Well, then, let him, then why isn't it, look, he's had three years to get this stuff going, so it isn't like this is not a new-
You can't put them in before the walls are up, so, I mean, clearly, that's something that has to go in towards the end of the process, and this is the way that it's being implemented.
Okay, but he, but he changed the rules of what he was gonna put in.
He changed, he changed the, they proposed the, a different method of achieving the same result.
But, yeah, but, okay, and I agree, at the end, he may achieve the same result. When do you think we'll have, based upon his solution, when do you think we'll see 22,000 square feet of green walls? How many years?
I've asked that same question, because that was a big concern that I had.
Yeah?
And it's, it will be probably at the end of the second year that it's all grown in. 18 months to two years.
Let me, I'm, I got, and I'm, I mean, I got, initially, look, 60% of the people in this city voted against that project, all right? And I can't go back and stop it. I'm not, have no intention of trying to go there. But, this helps him, and I understand that. Does nothing, when's the last time you went to a person, a resident building their house and said, you gotta put a wastewater treatment system in, but I'll tell you what, I'll give you two years after you get your occupancy permit to put it in?
Well, that's not really an apples-to-apples thing. You can't operate the house without the wastewater system.
Well, then, you got your houses 18, you're supposed to be 18 feet-
A landscape restoration project might, might be a more comparable thing, where Esha has to be restored, or native trees have to be planted back, and they go in as seedlings. They're not gonna be, you know, fully grown as trees for some time. So, that's the, that's the way I'm thinking this.
But that's the restoration process. It says, I'm gonna go back and replant the stuff. This was specific. It said 22,000 square feet of living walls are required. That was the requirement in the CDP, right?
It's, it got changed to vines. It's something that I felt I-
Who agreed to change it?
They proposed a change. I reviewed a lot of documents that they submitted showing, because I had a lot of the same concerns. Like, how is this gonna, is this gonna really cover it? Is it, how green is it gonna be when it first, when you first go in, when it first goes in? And how long is it gonna take to fully cover everything? There were some practical reasons and other reasons why this design made more sense.
Why is that?
Because there's more variety of species that you can use with vines. They grow faster. They, when, in the full sun, on certain walls, it's, you can't really keep succulents there. They just, they don't thrive, and so we would end up with big plastic containers with, without live plants in them. So, there were a number of things like that that went into the decision. And so, I felt like this would be a comparable solution. It fit with the design aesthetic that they were looking for, and so that's, that's the goal that we're going towards.
Right, but you're not gonna get there for two years. That's, that's my problem. I mean, look, it wasn't, it wasn't our solution. It was his solution that they proposed, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and, you know, if it says you gotta, otherwise, it seems to me, we're making resolutions and that these conditions we're putting in there aren't conditions, they're suggestions, because people can change them after we make them and not have to adhere to the stuff.
Well, the, the specific plan included provisions for what, what types of changes could be made and who had the authority to change them, and changes to landscaping were one of those. And that was, that was-
The specific plan specifically, on a couple pages, talked about living green walls.
Right. And this is, this is a, a different, this is a similar way to accomplish the same thing.
Yeah, but to say one thing, to get your permit, your project approved, and then change it at the end and not deliver what you, it seems to me to be, I mean, that, well, John, go ahead.
Well, and I invite the audience to do this. I drove around the property yesterday. There are zero vines planted on the west wall, which is over 300 feet long. Zero. There's zero vines planted on the eastern wall, which is about 100 feet wall. There's zero vines planted behind the Whole Foods Market, which is supposed to be totally covered. There's zero vines planted on the, on the wall that goes, the sound, quote, sound wall in the back. None.
That's not true. The, the sound wall is completely planted. There were some vines that were relocated. We went through very carefully to make sure that 22,000 square feet is what they ended up with at the end of the day, because that was a very specific requirement of the code, as far as landscape and open space. So, that, all the square footage is accounted for. As we've been discussing, it's not fully grown in yet. Some of it's been relocated to different places, but it's all ultimately will be there.
Well, it was a Friday, it wasn't, so I'll go drive around it tomorrow. It's, now, have we issued a temporary use permit for the 8th? Has that actually been issued?
It's been applied for. I don't know if it's been issued yet.
But the 8th is this weekend?
Yes.
Okay, and that's an appealable decision. So, how do we find out when it's issued?
I think a notice goes out when it's issued.
So, who do we ask? Because this is Monday.
If you're signed up as an interested party, you would get notice of it.
Go ahead, sign up.
Well, it's, okay, a lot of notices go out on Friday for events that happen Saturday, so.
The other thing is, this event is proposed to be in the parking lot. It's proposed to be in tents. It's not proposed to be inside any of the buildings. So, if there are any issues around getting the CFO issued that haven't been resolved by the time of the event, it's, the, the event is being held completely independent of any of the buildings or the facilities. So, the site, the building official has determined the site is safe. It's like, you can look at it like the chili cook-off. It's held on a vacant lot. It's not relying on a septic system. It's not relying on any buildings that haven't had a CFO. There, it's all tents and a paved parking lot. So-
Well, all I know is that-
At this point, there's not a reason not to issue that temporary-
No, there's not a reason not to issue it. It's just that, according to Trevor at the last meeting, we cannot appeal the CFO, but we can appeal temporary use permits.
Okay, all I would suggest, if you're watching this at home, pay attention to this. This is how we get screwed, for lack of a better word. You know, we, we have permit, we have conditions. We, it's, everybody, in your life, if you wanna do something, you're gonna meet the conditions. Apparently, we don't use the same rules for everybody, so that's, that's the end of that one.
A quick question on that, just, just Bonnie, for your clarification. So, so basically, what we have agreed to now is that the, the project has, looks like about 18 months for everything to come in, for the walls to fill into about 22,000 square feet. What's the process between, between here and when it's full for kind of visiting that, or if something doesn't take, what's the process? Because I wouldn't want to have an update in a year saying, oh, one whole wall died or something. You know, what's, what's the process there?
It's, it's a requirement for this project, as we've been discussing, to have green walls maintained over the life of the project. So, once they grow in, they have to be, they have to stay in and be maintained. It'll, it'll be a condition compliance issue with code enforcement.
Okay, so if they, if they don't have those green walls in place at some period, what would be the period and what would be the response?
I can't really tell you a hypothetical like that. They're responsible to maintain 22,000 square feet of green walls.
It, it would be an enforcement issue. I also want to, you know, this is not an agendas item, so we can't, you know, have an extended discussion about it. Some comment and questions are okay, but I don't want us to linger on it.
Now, this is a big issue, Trevor. This is, this is, you know-
I get it, but we're gonna comply with the Brown Act.
I understand, you know, but this is a-
Other people may want to weigh in if we were gonna have a discussion about it.
I hope, I hope people can even weigh in, because this is, I don't think this is right. But, okay, let's move along.
No, one other.
Okay.
Tomorrow evening at 5 o'clock, tomorrow afternoon, is the Public Safety Commission. And it kind of slides under the radar, but tomorrow, they're gonna consider using the Dan Blocker Beach parking lot for a homeless, safe parking area. So, I just want, very few people know about it, so I just like the local residents to know, and if they want to weigh in, they can come tomorrow at 5:00.
Okay, thank you, John. Let's move on to consent calendar. There's only one item. Anybody want to pull it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to pull it. Couple, couple, hopefully, easy questions.
Do we need a staff report, or you just want to go to the questions?
I think I could just go to the questions.
Is that right with you? Jessica?
Yeah, you might want to stay there, right? But, um, let's see. So, there, on the, on the map, there's some, a little notation about setbacks that I didn't understand. Setback reductions, it's over on the upper right-hand side of the conformance review. I don't know if that's something that's easy to put up on the screen, or if it even matters that much, but there are requirements of eight feet for setback reductions, site wall, site wall, property line. And what's being actually proposed is more like three feet, four feet, and right on the line. So, I just wondered what's going on there, and maybe I'm just not understanding what that's about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the applicant has applied for some setback reductions for different components of the OWTS. Unfortunately, I don't have a, a slide for this, so I can't put it up on the screen.
Okay.
Environmental Health reviewed it, and they were okay with the setbacks. Several of the components for this OWTS are cited on an existing sewage easement that's shared between the subject application at 22751 and 22761. And for that purpose, we're requiring a conditional use permit be applied for. And that application is, I think was applied for this last week.
Okay, and so that's, that, for that same reason, that's why the 12-foot radius around the seepage pit at the back actually extends off the subject property onto the neighbor property. But that's okay, because that's also the same property that the joint use agreement, or whatever it's called, is in effect.
Yes, the existing sewage easement.
Okay, so it goes all the way around. There was some geology. Chris Dean, Chris Dean wrote that he wanted setback letters, something from structural consultants, and I just wondered if those letters came in. Is that part of the file now?
They're gonna be part of the building plan check process, so they're not required prior to planning approval.
Okay. And just to double-check, just to sort of ask the question, we, so we're completely confident that abandoning the existing one here is not gonna pose any long-term issues. For example, there's, nothing will be leaching towards other food establishments or the beach or anything, because that abandoned one will be completely cleaned out first, right?
It will be completely cleaned out in a much better system.
Okay, that's it. Receiving file. Everybody agree?
Yeah, agree.
Okay, moving along. We're gonna, next item up is 5B, Coastal Development Permit Amendment Number 18008, an application amending coastal development permit number 15050 to add a condition of approval for a public lateral access. We have, you want to get a staff report, Richard?
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the commission. Just to quickly refresh everyone's mind about where this is located, it's on the eastern end of town, just to the east of Big Rock, and it's on a currently vacant lot, where there's additionally vacant lots to the west of the site. This project was approved last fall by the Planning Commission. Subsequent to the approval by the Planning Commission, the Coastal Commission contacted staff and the applicant, and the commission had requested that the applicant provide an offer to dedicate lateral beach access. The applicant has no issues granting that to the California Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission, currently, they were considering, as we mentioned in the staff report, to file an appeal. That process is on hold. They have not filed a final action notice on the project. And basically, what it is, is the Coastal Commission wants this to be recorded as a condition of approval, so there's no way for the owner to back out of it. And once this is recorded, it's expected that the Coastal Commission will drop their appeal.
Excellent. And nothing else has changed from the original?
The home is still the same design as proposed by, proposed and approved by the commission. We are strictly just adding a condition of approval.
Thank you very much. We have the applicant here to answer questions, unless you want to say something, Vitas, is it? Okay?
Uh, disclosures, do we need disclosures?
Oh, disclosures. None?
Yes. I spoke with Vitas. We talked about the slide history, Caltrans sea level rise policy. I learned a lot about the PCH geology there being different than the slope above geology, and that the house is being designed, in effect, as a retaining wall for the highway itself. And that's, yeah.
I guess my question is, Trevor, how do you put an appeal period, which is statutory, on hold?
What, what do you mean?
Well, you have a certain number, you have a certain number of days to appeal, and that time has passed. So, why are we here?
This is a, this is just an amendment, right? Amendment application?
Yes, but the coastal development, it's my understanding that the Coastal Commission never opened the appeal period.
Yeah, they have a certain amount of time to appeal our decision. Okay? So, if they don't appeal our decision for, when our decision becomes final, they have a certain number of days. That passed.
And I think, my understanding is, and Vitas can correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe the Coastal Commission contacted him, and there was an agreement so that there could be a stay on opening that period.
Right, and what I'm wondering is-
She didn't say, saying yes.
Yeah, he, he said yes. I'm wondering, Trevor, how does another body extend our LIP appeal period without our, our acquiescence? And why is it heard by us?
There's language in the, I'm, I'm not saying whether I think that is a proper way to do it or not, but there's language in the LIP that references when the appeal period starts for the Coastal Commission. appeal period starts for the coastal commission, and, um, it's based on when they, um, deem a notice of final action from us to be received, and it sounds like they have, um, not deemed it received, even though it's been however long, I'm not sure if that's the exact mechanism.
They had an agreement, but they didn't receive the, the appeal, I mean, that sounds very bizarre.
We, we sent them the notice of final local action.
We sent the notice of local final action.
They have not acknowledged it and opened their ten working day appeal period.
Right, and so I, I'm wondering how an outside agency could change our LIP, which gives them ten days to appeal.
They can't change our LIP, there could be a potential issue there, in terms of when the date runs, but if they have an agreement in place with the applicant, the applicant could have problems asserting that the appeal period is expired, there could be issues between them, in any case, the issue before us is whether, you know, the amendment that's applied for, you know, you can make the findings for that, in terms of the appeal period, that's for their own attorney to advise them, as to, um, whether it's, the, why is this course of action, or what their best options are.
And I, I do just want to clarify though, because I'm looking at page twenty of the resolution we signed, and it says, within the ten working days of the issuance of the city's notice of final action, so, the, should we expect that every project doesn't have the final until coastal agrees, or how, how do we, like, as far as what's submitted by the city, what's the official ringing of the bell that the ten-day clock is gone? Because that, like, not just on this project, just to understand in general.
I think what Trevor said, I think what Trevor said was, this is pretty much an agreement between, and if he's got an issue with it, he, he's lawyer, he could, you know, do whatever his lawyer wants to do to fight this, but he's not doing that, uh, he wants to get his, this offer to dedicate done, and I think we should take a look at that.
No, I understand that, but what happens, where is, where is the city of Malibu planning commissions issued, where are they considered?
Right.
They're the ones that passed it, and they put that resolution out, and they expect it to be followed, and it appears that nobody in the city had anything to do with this, so, is it theoretically possible that a year after we finish some project, uh, we come in with a C, with this, oh, we stalled it for a year?
Yeah, because, I mean, I, I, I signed off on this one, just looking at this, and, you know, that line looked pretty clear to me, my understanding was that, okay, that's, that's something that happens in the background, now that this is final, but now it was, you know, agreed to be held, but that wasn't clarified when we signed off on it, so, I'm just curious if there are others where we need to be thinking about that.
No, I mean, it's not a concern for you guys, the, all the appeal periods are all statutory, and in terms of, the permit is, final is issued by you, the appeal rights travel separately, after we make our determination here, or, sorry, you make your determination, I don't make the determination, um, you know, that permit is final for all these period, for all purposes, except for any rights that would, um, attach to it, per the appeal rights in the LIP.
Right, so-
Or litigation.
This is a, what if, what if Vitas stood upright now and say, I want to withdraw my, my CUPA, or, he said, vote against me, uh, vote no on this, is it over?
I mean, if he wants to withdraw his application, then he withdraws the application, it's like for us to, to rule on here.
Okay, but if he stood up and said, now I don't want to give the, uh, I don't want to give it, so vote no, um, and we voted no, is the coastal commission out of luck?
No, uh, number one, you should, you need to make your determination about whether the facts support the findings, whether or not he tells you to vote no or vote yes, you need to make your determination.
Well, I understand that, I, I'm wondering whether the, the legal facts, that, we had a, we had a case, we had a, a project we approved, where the, um, appeal, the permit had run out, and we approved it retroactively, and the guy, the guy, um, appealed to the coastal commission, one of the residents in the neighborhood, and they said, no, you can't do that, you can't go retroactive, and, and they lost, I mean, the, the, the CUP, CDP is canceled, and, same kind of thing, it's, the language wasn't right, their decision was, once you've hit that date, you're over with, it's a bright line.
Yeah.
I wonder how this is any different?
Like I said, the appeal period is statutory by the LIP, if they've reached some kind of agreement, that's gonna foreclose them from challenging any action from the coastal commission, or what they've worked out, that's between them and the coastal commission, but, you know, it's not our determination here to determine whether the appeal rights have expired or not expired, in terms of the coastal commission action.
No, no, you're not gonna get an answer, so let's, say, so I have, I have no questions, and I don't think anybody else does, I move, I move the motion.
We have to have a hearing, we open a hearing, we close a hearing, we then have a motion.
All right, hang on, uh-
Yeah, I have questions, but do we need to hear from you, or?
No, Vitas has here, answer questions unless we, so he does, you don't have anything to say?
So you want to open the public hearing?
Okay, open the public hearing, close the public hearing, we're now at the commission table, questions?
Okay, um, I, I have questions about the, the specific subject on hand, I just wanted to make the one comment first, that, um, there was a long history with this land here, and I've already written an email about it, so it's on the record, that, that, a lot of people in Big Rock were, you know, my family was there when this big slide happened in seventy-eight, a lot of people believed that whole chunk of land there, where three or four houses were destroyed, had become, taken by eminent domain by the state or Caltrans, apparently that never happened, nobody seems to have a comment for sure now about whether it was ever in public hands or not, so, um, all I've heard is, we don't look back that far, so, that's what we're doing, and the one question I have about the way that slide was re- remediated, that I think needs to be on the record here, is, was the degree of safety that was, that that slide was engineered to, designed to make a highway safe, is that degree of safety different than what it would have been if they were saying, we're, we're designing this to make a residence directly below it safe?
Where, where are you going with this, I mean, because this house has been-
I just want to, that's all I just want to put on the record, because I put it in an email, and I figured I better state it publicly, too.
Cool, because the house has been approved, so-
I, I understand, so on to the, the questions at hand, um, I, I saw a few, a couple views, for example, A three-point-two, that looked like there could be some sort of foundation-related materials, like an underlayment or something.
Okay, hang, hang, let's, I, I think what would, it would give us a better chance to get through this, to focus, the question is, they want, they got this offer to dedicate.
Can I finish my sentence?
Okay, but you, you keep, keep me on the offer to dedicate, if you could, please, okay?
Yeah, the materials that extend seaward of the seawall, presumably right within the easement, so I'm just wondering, am I seeing something, this is where we're offering to dedicate an easement, but there's some construction stuff that's happening in, in it, and I couldn't tell from the plan?
So effectively crossing that easement wouldn't be easy?
Wouldn't be easy, yeah, I don't know what that is in the drawing, is it, is it something under the sand, or what, what are we looking at?
The easement that's being dedicated for public access, the lateral easement-
Yeah.
-is ostensibly in front of our seawall, and this is a wet beach, the public will not be sleeping on their towels on this beach.
Right, and there's nothing in the structure that's extend, like a, an underlayment, or a-
No, there isn't.
-footer that goes down below that, okay?
No, this is on piles vertically below the wall structures.
Okay, and, um, given how little sand there is, it's bizarre that the state even wants this offer to dedicate here, um, it seems like the mean-high tide line will often be up that seawall, and we also have the drip line on the balcony, which extends out even further, so my question is, it sounds like the easement is going to be going, if it, if it's passable at all, it's gonna be going sort of under the balcony, and so, then, uh, for an easement, don't you have to dedicate, doesn't that have to legally extend upward to the sky, can you, can you have sort of a partial tunnel and call that a easement?
Question is, does it go under the balcony?
Yeah.
The deck overhangs part of this area that we're dedicating, but there's still quite a bit of sand on the south side of the structure that, uh, will be passable during certain times of the year, depends on the daily tide.
So, uh, just as a legal matter, can, can you consider the portion that's being overhung part of the easement, or, 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 or does it easement have to go up to the sky?
The easement goes from the drip line of the deck, so the structure is the deck, and the deck has been demonstrated to be set back, uh, the required minimum of ten feet from the mean-high tide, that line, that was reviewed by the California State Lands Commission, and so what the coastal commission's interested in is, from the area where the mean-high tide line was determined by the State Lands Commission, to the edge of its balcony, and that's what they're gonna be writing in the language of this when it's reviewed by the coastal commission.
Okay, I, I guess I'm, what I'm seeing in practice, and if, not all the time now, but certainly all the time twenty years from now, that mean-high tide line will be landward of the balcony, so there will be, in effect, no practical zone of easement there.
That's the future.
Yeah, can't fix that.
Well, I mean, it's part, part of the year now, it's that way, part of every day is that way.
Yeah, but we're, we're approved, we're, we are, we are authorized to approve as of now, if that house has got waves washing over it a hundred years from now, that ain't our problem, and it's-
Okay, any more questions on this?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
On faith, Kathleen, roll call.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, going back to item four, five A, which is coastal development per, permit number eighteen-oh-two-one, and site plan review number eighteen-oh-two-four, an application for a new single-family rev, residence with subterranean garage and associated development at sixty-three ninety-eight Seastar Drive, uh, staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners, uh, the project before you, uh, today is at six-three-nine-eight Seastar Drive, the project is a new single-family residence on a vacant lot, um, around a little over six thousand square feet, uh, for the residence itself, a little over seven thousand TDSF, includes a basement and subterranean garage, a pool with pool deck and patios, detached nine-hundred-square-foot studio, unenclosed parking, um, a fence along the west and south borders of the property, nine-hundred-and-eighty-five cubic yards of non-exempt grading, a new septic system, planters with retaining walls, and landscaping. The project is located, uh, west of, or I guess, yeah, west, of Point Dume, um, north of Point Dume, at, on the northern part of Seastar Drive, which is in the Seastar Estates, um, subdivision, the lower leg of Seastar Drive is a completely separate subdivision, um, and you can see it's located on the intersection of Seastar and Morning View. This is the site plan with the, uh, main residence located towards the north of the property, and the studio located below that to the south. Elevations show, um, here on the west elevation, the subterranean garage, um, and that's, that third level above is actually set back twenty feet, it's a little bit misleading in this view, um, and you can see that in the south elevation, that setback, um, here we have the east elevation on the other side, and the north elevation. These are renderings from the applicant, this view is from the southwest, um, looking from the HOE, HOA easement, um, at the intersection of Seastar Drive and Morning View, towards the house. This is a closer-up view from that same angle, you can see the studio there to the right on the picture, this is a more straight west view, uh, where you can see the garage and the house above it, um, and again, that studio to the right, and this is looking, um, kind of in the middle of the property from, uh, the Morning View, uh, side. The, um, these are site photos, um, from the, of the story poles, from, uh, the Seastar Drive side, and then the Morning View side, and you can see the house behind it. There are three easements on this property, one is that HOE, HOA easement that I mentioned before, another is, um, a hiking trail easement, um, which has been modified throughout the lifetime of the property, um, in nineteen-ninety, the track map was approved, and I'll show in the next slide how this trail has evolved over time, um, in two thousand and two, the trail was realigned, um, and, uh, in June of two thousand and ten, that realignment was adjusted, and in two thousand and eleven, that adjusted realignment was corrected, um, so what you're seeing here is the final trail easement, the way it moves through the property, um, this is what we're working with today, and to give you some more context on this history, you can see, in the lightest shade of green, that was the original, um, trail easement, and then, uh, later on, it was amended or aligned to that kind of middle green through the property, and then it was adjusted, again, um, to avoid the drainage feature on the property, that darkest green, and to go back, the correction from that darkest green that you just saw was to add that, um, portion of the trail that extends on the southwestern border, to connect with the rest of that Zuma Ridge Trail proposed alignment. There's also a drainage easement on the property, um, which is maintained or operated by, um, LA County Public Works Flood Control, Control District, um, it's outlined there in blue, um, and it extends sort of, uh, to the bottom of the property. You can see the drainage feature, the culvert that's located on the site, um, the one view is on the property, the left view, um, and the story poles that you see in the back are of the proposed house, and then the other view is from, uh, the Morning View side, and you can see the, the, a paved area where that drainage culvert is located. In the ACDP that was brought before you, um, in April, uh, the condition for the trail, for development on the trail was to, um, require opening, um, access to the trail should the trail be improved, um, we've changed the condition, which is condition nineteen in the resolution before you, um, to be slightly more conservative, to say that no work may take place in the existing trail easement, um, and that plans brought before us, uh, to submit to building safety would have to, um, show no fencing at all, um, but I wanted to, uh, show you both options, um, for discussion, if that's helpful. Uh, in summary, our recommendation is to adopt resolution number nineteen-thirty-nine approving CDP number eighteen-zero-twenty-one, and I am available for questions.
Justine, thank you very, very much, disclosures, wait, want to do disclosures first?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I've visited the site shortly before the last meeting we had on this, um, had some concerns about the geological engineering under the house that I learned and that I've since been satisfied about, uh, potential view impacts seemed apparent then, still is a concern at some level, um, and I also saw recently, uh, tax assessor map, I was looking at it for, I don't remember what other reason, and noticed that they have a satellite view from two thousand and fourteen that shows that there's significant vegetation all through the gully area there around the drainage, that, um, uh, looks similar to the stuff that's further up the gully, that burned in the fire, but this stuff is not there suggesting that a bunch of what looks to be escha was cleared off of the site there between two thousand and fourteen and today, and, um, I tried to get a note into Dave Crawford to see if he could comment on what some of that vegetation is, that, the, the, that I see on the satellite picture, and in real life, up the gully, it looks like it's sumac and/or lemonade berry, but, and, and there are some sycamore trees, and I'm just not sure, uh, what that is, and so, apparently, he's on vacation, so we didn't hear about that, but I saw that on the map, so that's a concern to me, thanks.
Okay. Disclosures?
None.
Jeff, uh, I visited the property, uh, prior to the prior meeting, which I disclosed, and I visited Friday with Steve Euring and the architect, uh, viewed the, um, drainage tunnel, and that's about all I learned, is what the drainage tunnel looks like when you're right up next to it.
Yeah, Jeff said, we visited with the architect, who's also the owner, got a good perspective of where the drainage tunnel was, uh, and I think that was the big issue, and where the trail easement is also, we got at least a view of that, Jeff, did you have any, did you, okay, uh, John, John's got a question, Stan.
Could I see the slide with the change in the, uh, number nineteen? Okay, that's the only question I had.
Okay.
We have one speaker, Stephen Kent, who's the applicant and the owner. Stephen, you've got 15 minutes. You can take as much as you want, save the rest for, I don't think you're gonna, anybody's gonna argue against you, so...
Well, that would be great.
You're not gonna have a rebuttal.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, and I'm the architect and the owner, and I think I've designed a tasteful and understated house that's respectful of the neighbors, and I remain available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions? Oh, we close the hearing, close the public hearing. Back to the commission, questions? Anybody want to start?
I've got a fair number of things here, actually.
Why don't you go then?
Okay. The last time I said I'd looked at one room on the plan, and it looked like maybe the inside dimensions were being measured rather than the outside relative to TDSF, that that might be a difference, and I was assured that all that had been triple-checked and gone through. And this morning, my eye caught something as I was looking at the map, and I think we're gonna wanna look at, I'm gonna probably need a laser pointer to make this apparent to people if... I mean, I could, I could talk about it, but you probably don't wanna believe me by looking at something on the paper. That there are, that there are places where the lines for, let's see, if we can look first at the second-floor plan, A 2.3. There are places where the, the measurements on the plans are aligned with the interior spaces where to measure TDSF, they should be measured on, on the exterior walls. And I'll keep talking until we see A 2.3. So as a result of that, you get, okay, there we go. So there are places where, for example, it's gonna be tricky to get the, I guess we can't blow that up.
Well, we've got our, we've got our plans.
There's like...
No, you gotta use the pointer.
Can't hear you. Okay. I can't shout from there. Okay, so there's a corner right up there, and there's a corner down here. Wow, it's so shaky from so far away. Where the, the measurement line doesn't come all the way to the edge of the outside, so there are places where it's like eight, if you assume the thickness of a wall is nominally eight inches. Okay, it could be thicker, it could be thinner theoretically, but eight is probably normal. Then when you do the calculations, you get different numbers. So, for example, the kitchen is specked at 445, but when you use the measurements on the plan, but include the wall, it's 459, so 14 square feet bigger. The living and dining together is nine bigger. The bedroom, the second bedroom is 47 bigger. First bedroom is eight bigger. So I looked at four rooms, because those were the easiest, simplest forms to look at without having to fiddle with, okay, what's, how much is there in the bathroom and in the closet? And, you know, I picked sort of four easy rooms. That represents about, that's .35 of the total area of the house. So I looked at about a third of it, and I found a total of 163 additional square feet in that third. There's nominally at 238 square feet under the TDSF threshold. So if you, but if you projected the third I found at .35 of the total area and said that multiplied, scaled up the 163 I found, you'd get 465. So in other words, it looks like it could be as high above the threshold as it is stated as being below the threshold now. So there's, there's, there's a, there's a real concern there about where are we on the TDSF threshold?
Justine, could you tell us what you guys have done or did to go through and check those numbers?
Yeah, so I and one other planner measured out and checked all of these numbers, and we did ask for correction, corrections for the basement level at that time. And the first and second level, we also didn't always get the same numbers as the applicant, but the total square footage, when adding up all the rooms, added up to about, within a reasonable margin of error for, you know, a computer measuring it versus myself with a ruler, about the same for the total floor area. So I've asked Steve to come prepared to show us exactly how he measured from which side of the interior wall to the other side of the interior wall, because that's where we were getting, when I measured, that's where the differences were coming from, the stated numbers, and I was measuring on the wrong side of the interior wall versus, or the other side of the interior wall.
Maybe as an example, we could look at bedroom number two, just to, if we wanna hone in on a specific case, where it's nominally specked on the plan as 14 feet wide, but the line doesn't go all the way, and when you interpolate the distance, it looks, instead of 14, it looks to be more like 15 and a half feet.
Steve, can you do anything to make us smarter up here?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to start by saying I'm a registered architect. I staffed on the drawings. Never had square footages questioned before on, you know, working 25 years as an architect. So, but Justine and I have gone over this at least three separate times, and we've adjusted things of what should be included, what shouldn't be included. There's a planter area that I feel definitely shouldn't be included. It's an outdoor area, but it was not only included once, but it was included twice. But since I'm not trying to push the limits of the total, total development square footage, I didn't think it was worth arguing over, and, and I really don't think it's worth splitting hairs now since I'm still not trying to push the total development square footage.
Did you measure to the, you measured to the boundary of the exterior walls?
Of course, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, this was...
I, I don't see, in many cases, I don't see that indicated by the measurement lines on the plan. They don't go on the exterior, they, in places, they, they lay on the interior.
Justine, were they measured, when you measured, did you go to the exterior walls?
Yes, and I asked Steve to revise the plan so that the walls were to scale in terms of thickness.
Okay, but that's not, but the numbers, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm, right now, I'm just relying on the expertise of my iPhone 4S calculator, saying, here's a number on one side, here's another on the other, I'm multiplying it, and I'm getting a number that's, you know, several percentage points higher than the number that's listed in the, in the room on the plan. Are you, so you're saying that the numbers in the rooms on the plan are not relevant to the overall measurement?
The importance of TDSF is to go to the exterior of the structure. So whether, I mean, there, there's some walkie-shaped rooms and some stairways and all the kinds of other things, so it makes it a little difficult, I think, to dimension every single nuance of the whole design, and there's probably, I would imagine, different reasons to put dimensions on here besides just TDSF calculations.
Right.
There's all kinds of different.
But I'm, I'm looking at numbers that are on the outside of the building, on the plan, that go in and they, they, understanding completely, we're measuring the outside, we're not concerned about, you know, and I try to choose the sort of simplest volumes or areas, I should say, to, to model, so I wasn't making a lot of assumptions about what was being included and what wasn't being included.
Justine, when you guys do this, you do this by hand?
We do it by hand, and we use a software as well. We don't have something like AutoCAD to measure precisely, but we have a measuring tool using Adobe, and we did it both ways.
What do you use, Steve?
AutoCAD.
Okay, and we're up to, you know, to say we're not pushing the limits, we're talking about over 7,000 square feet, and we're, you're specking within 163 feet of that. So that's, we're, we're close to the limit already. So a little, any little bit of margin here is pushing us over.
Well, can I ask a question on that? You're saying that in that number you came up with are some planters?
250 square feet.
250 square feet, which may allay his, his concerns. Can you show us?
Sure.
Or, Justine, you can tell us why those planters were counted, or, or is it overhang, or is it something else? Yeah.
Sure, let me try and find the, it's a little bit easier to see, actually in the renderings.
It's on the basement plan.
Computer wants to catch up with me. So if you see the planter located on this plan, it extends up through the next, the first floor above, and we asked Steve to count both this, this planter on this floor and the square footage of the planter as if it were to be capped on the first floor. So right now, it extends straight, straight through to the ceiling of the first floor, but we asked him to pretend as if he was gonna put a floor on that first floor to cap the planter and to include that as square footage as well.
And just to clarify, it's, it's all exterior. When she says it extends to the first floor, it's to the exterior, not the interior of the building.
Right, okay, so that, if that is in fact being counted doubly now, that would completely allay my, about this margin thing, because that would, that would cover it.
You, you comfortable with that, then?
On that, on that point, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's one done, okay.
Yeah, that, that would allay that completely. Looking at the two-thirds rule, I had two questions or concerns about this. First, bearing in mind that the existing design is specked as really quite close to the two-thirds. You've got it at 65.8%, where 66.666667, however, however many sixes you want, would be two-thirds. So question one about that is how is the square footage of the staircase counted? Because it looks to me, what's happening here right now is that the, by staircase, I mean staircase between the basement and the first floor. It looks to me that that has been included in the square footage measurement of the first floor, making the first floor big enough proportionate to the second floor. So where, is, am I correct that the staircase is, has been included with the first floor?
That is correct.
Okay, so then my, the next question is what, is there any sort of rule about stairs where you count them with which floor? Like, it sort of makes sense to me that you might count half the staircase with the lower floor and half the staircase with the upper floor, or is, is there a convention or a rule on that?
Richard, every time I've seen it, it's half and half when it comes from the basement.
For a two-thirds rule, or?
For anything. They, they give half, half to the, half to the basement, and therefore you only get half of that and then half to the floor up above. Now, you can correct me, but as, I, I remember from other plans, that's the way it was done. Is that right, Richard?
That's correct, normally it's half and half.
Okay, so did we do that in this case, or we put it all on the first floor instead of half and half? Because that would make it, that would, that would make the two-thirds rule not followed.
If it wasn't half and ha, half, all right, let me, yeah, if...
Let's find out.
Yeah.
It, it looks like both sets of stairs are included on the first floor.
Yeah, that's, that's what I calculated, and the thing is, if you include only half of the staircase for the first floor, you're so close to the, the margin, the ratio becomes .6688, which is just over two-thirds. So that staircase, invisible, but nonetheless, it's, it's, here we are.
But it also helps, his first point, it also makes half of the half not count. So you're farther away from your maximum, because the bottom, the, the basement only counts half the excess square footage. Instead of putting it on the first floor, where it counts all of it.
That's true, but that, that's true.
So that helps your first point.
It does, yeah.
And your second point is valid.
The first point doesn't need help anymore.
Yeah.
The planters were included in the first floor also, then in that count? Because that would also skew things.
The first point is over. Oh, oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Hmm.
That would increase the size of the bottom floor, which would make your ratio even worse.
Right, right, you're right. No, it would, it would make the, it would make it better.
Right.
If they've counted the planter as part of the first floor, then they're also good again.
Yeah, we're dancing on the head of a pin here, guys.
Well, not really.
Right, but, but that's why we're here. This is, this is our gig, right? We need to look at the thing and, and, you know, be...
No, I agree. Now, can, Richard, when you go through that, the question of the planters being counted on the first floor, was it? I mean, we sort of passed over it before, but if it shouldn't have been, because I've never counted a planter before, I didn't quite understand that, but if it shouldn't have been, that makes the bottom floor smaller, and that screws up the ratio, too.
Because the planter is not open to the sky, it's covered by a six-foot projection. It was included, as we normally do, in, in the square footage calculation. I also have to make a correction that the stairs going from the basement up to the first floor were counted towards the basement.
100%?
Yeah, and the stairs going from the first floor to the second floor were counted towards the first floor.
So it washes, and it's half each.
Wait, but if they were not counted towards the first floor, then the first floor is proportionately even smaller relative to the second story.
But the count could be consistent, because if you did half and half on each, then it would be the same as one going to the basement and the other staying on the first floor. So it should wash, if I'm following this.
Well, let me ask Richard, let me ask Richard another question. That sounds like double counting. When we've had stairs that go, are these stairs right on top of each other? When we've had buildings before that were basement, first floor, second floor, we only counted it once.
Yeah, these are two different staircases, is my understanding from the plans.
Yeah. But, no, so, but if all that's put on the, on the basement and is no longer, then the first floor is that much smaller proportionate to the second floor.
That's the way it was calculated for the two-thirds rule. The, the basement was already including the stairs for the two-thirds rule.
Well, the two-thirds is the first floor to the second floor. So it's just a question of, are those stairs part of the first floor, making the first floor relatively larger to the second? Or do we count them as the basement, in which case the first floor is smaller relative to the, and that sounds like what they just said.
Are we doing correctly and do it half and half?
And half and half, you come out with the .6688.
Okay, let me ask Richard a question here. If we put in a condition that, well, we have a requirement of a two-thirds rule. If we put in a condition that it must be, must follow the two-thirds rule, then planning, planning staff, not, not permit staff, can adjust that since it's a, what is it called, a non-consequential item or whatever it is?
It has to substantially conform with the conditions of approval.
Right, so if we approve it, we can't calculate it here, but we can say you guys gotta fix it, right? In, in the resolution?
And in addition, as Commissioner Marks has pointed out, when you add the extra square, not extra, I shouldn't say, but the few, the first floor's gonna become larger, because what's gonna happen is you're gonna end up taking half of the staircase that goes down to the basement and moving whatever that number is onto the first floor. So the first floor effectively is gonna gain square footage.
And what I calculated, that makes the ratio of .6688, so...
No, I think he's, I think what Planner Malik is saying is that those two are gonna wash, and it's gonna be the exact count, just under .666, I believe, is that your statement?
But the basement is irrelevant to the two-thirds rule.
It's where you're counting the staircase, right?
But right now, 100% of the staircase going to the basement is counted in the basement. Half of that staircase is now gonna be moved to the first floor, and just without a scale, it looks like the two stairs are the same size, and Steve's nodding his head. So what's gonna happen is by moving up half of that basement, you're gonna get that extra half that Commissioner Hill's looking for, onto the first floor.
And would that correct, would that still fall under the TDSF? Since you're now having 100% floor countage instead of half?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, we're fine on the TDSF once we figured out that the thing was double counted.
Are you comfortable with John's recommendation, resolution?
Yes.
That then...
On that point, yes.
Okay, moving along.
Okay, moving along. The, the three-story above finished grade rule, it looks to me, two, two aspects of that. It looks from the street that you can see the second story, and I put in, asked an email question about what the code rule is, does the third story have to be set back, or how, how is that allowable? And what I do see on the plan is that the second story, specked as second story in the plan, overlaps the bottom two stories by several feet. I don't know if you, if you wanna, I should show this, I suppose. On A 2.3, the second story plan, can we get that up on the map? Who's in the booth?
The computer's catching up with us.
Oh, okay. So it's really two things. It's that from, from street level, i.e. in the driveway in front of the garage, it appears as three stories above finished grade. And actually, if I'm, I'm looking at the map here now, whoop. Yeah, I think you just had it there, second, second story? had it there, second, second story.
Would you prefer me to go back or show the elevations for?
Yeah, no, go back to the second story.
Okay.
We just had it there a second ago.
A 3.2? A 2.3, right?
A...
2.3 is what he's looking for.
Yes.
There you go.
There we go. If you look at the corner out here on the front there, the second story is, is sticking out above the first floor's story, a couple feet. So technically, there is an area where it's three stories tall in actuality. And so I'm just asking the question. I don't, I don't know what the, what the fine points are on this rule, but, you know, again, do we, is this substantial conformance? Is that, is that what we resort to here, or do we call it as, as it is?
A substantial conformance is, is the evaluation of plans as they go from the planning commission approval into plan check and then to permit issuance. It's not the conformance review of the plans.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a determination by the planning director.
Yeah.
I'm somehow missing the third story sticking out over the garage. Can we see a section that shows that? Because that's not allowed.
Yeah, it's, it's just by a couple feet.
Doesn't matter. You have to set back if you have a garage. Second floor must be set back.
So if I have the pointer here, so this is the garage in the first.
No, I'd like to see a.
Yeah, and there you can see.
Do we have a section, like, is the section A 3.2, is that? Am I looking at the right thing? Because I don't see where it sticks, where it's three stories in the front.
A 2.3 here.
If you look on sheet A dash 4.1, there's a section that I think might be revealing, we're working on getting there on the computer.
So can you show me the garage? Where, where do you drive into this house?
You drive in from C-Star, right?
Right, you drive in from C-Star, so on this west elevation, that kind of black box, that's the garage, and the, that top level is set back 20 feet, which is the width of the garage door, according to code.
You're dropping down instead of rising?
I can show, and this, you see, here, the second, the pen is kind of, the second story sticks out over the first by a couple feet, and then the garage is down below there. So for this one axis here.
Remember that the...
No, that's allowed.
The garage is not, subtranean level is not considered a story.
No, I'm, I'm looking at, yeah. Craig, you're, that is, the first story is the only thing that's sticking out.
Okay.
The rule is you can't have two stories sticking out. They have to be staggered.
And the garage is not counted, it's not called finished grade, because you can, it reads as a story from the street?
No, it's specifically not a garage.
Specifically addressed in the code section, acknowledging the fact that you're going to have a garage door, because there's otherwise no way to get in. And then anything above that has to be set back.
Okay.
No. Okay.
You happy?
I'm happy.
You happy?
Yeah, that answers the question. I, I guess I'd like to hear someday what that, the actual code section is, and, but we, that's a conversation.
I sent you that one, it's 3.6KC or something like that.
Yeah, the definition of a garage.
It's in the subtranean garage section.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that. Next issue, I mentioned it in my disclosure, the area of possible ESHA. I wanted to hear from Dave Crawford about what was actually back there between 2014 and today, that appears to have been substantially cleared out.
What was it mapped? Is it on the ESHA maps?
No, but what's on, what's on the, the assessor aerial photograph is an area that I measured on screen to be approximately 37,000 square feet, or the better part of an acre.
When the Coastal Commission approved this property, did they mark any ESHA down? When did they do that? When, when did that happen?
That happened in the maps in 2002.
Yeah, it's not on the map, but I, I always keep hearing, you know, when I say it's, it's mapped, and then somebody says, oh, well, that doesn't matter, it's what's really on the ground that matters. So I'm now saying, here's what was really on the ground, and now somebody's telling me it's only the map that matters.
No, it's both ways.
Well, and then the applicant's biologist went to the site to make sure what was on the ground, whether that was ESHA or not, she concluded it was not ESHA.
After the fact, after it had been cleared sometime after 2014.
It was in March of this year, if I remember.
Yeah.
But I, I'm taking, I did check the GIS system right now, as far as what's marked as ESHA on the GIS, if it's so careful to look at that.
I don't believe it is.
It doesn't, it does not show up on this property, so.
No.
Well, look, he's got the Coastal Commission on his side, he's got Crawford's letter on his side, and he's got his own individual biologist. I mean, he's, he's holding three of a kind over there, so.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a flush.
Okay, I will fold on that issue. This might be my last one, is it? No, not quite. The trail route, the way it's been realigned, it runs above the storm drain, and there's a small, narrow space that's barely wide enough for the route between the drain and the steel corteen wall that they're proposing to put there. It's very steep, so you're sort of having the trail now is going to be running along a, I don't know what's the word for it, it's, a steep slope as you cross it. So you're going laterally across a steep slope, and it just doesn't seem effective, but the only other alternative would be to run it down the other side of the drain, right through the drainage. So the, I don't know if we need to see the map of that to, and, and what the remedy for that might be?
Well, I can give you a little history on that, and that is, the trail was originally put in by the developer. And it didn't work. So the MRCA came along and said, it doesn't work, you got to realign it. And so they determined where it was, and we, we, and it's, it's, it's recorded.
Right, and it would have.
And so only they can rechange it.
It would have worked fine if there wasn't a house on the property, because you could kind of just go up a little bit higher around the day.
Well, you could, because you're going out of the easement.
But now the, the easement is just this narrow little slot between the, the corteen wall and the drainage on an angle.
But that's what it is.
That's what it is, and that's not us, and they have their choice.
It doesn't work, it doesn't work.
They could build a bridge if they want.
Right, okay. And then on the landscaping, it looks like we have fountain grass or pampas grass all over the plans, lots of non-natives right up close to the house. Like, likewise, we have a big, basically a wall of, looks like pine trees or junipers or something, put up between this house and the neighboring house to the north, that looks like a massive fire hazard. I know it's there for a privacy thing, but I'm wondering if the landscaping concept could be rethought for a more fire-safe, less flammable grass, pine kind of concept.
Yeah, and kind of touching on that, it, just in looking at, you know, this is a site plan review, so kind of looking around at the neighborhood, there were a couple of large homes lost in, right in the proximity here. I just don't kind of know how to factor that into, you know, kind of thoughts, just if, if we did want to take a look at neighborhood character as well, as, which kind of plays into your concern about fire, fire impact to this neighborhood, so.
Well, we, we do have that discretion on this site plan review, so I don't know. I don't know, what's, what's the remedy for that? Do we just, like, I think in the past, we've gotten applicants to just say, yeah, I'll agree to, to revise that.
As far as landscaping?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have to approve the landscaping plan, okay? Now, it depends, I'd like to have a comment from Steve on how, what's really there and why you did it that way, and, and do you really want juniper trees next to your house, et cetera?
It might be pines, I don't know.
Whatever they are.
Yeah.
I, I'm a little lost, I don't, I don't, where are the juniper trees? I don't know of any that's been proposed.
Well, this is in reference to the PDF packet, page 145, 147. I don't know what.
Do we have a landscape plan?
There are renderings of the thing that have landscape all illustrated in it.
Well, the renderings are just eye candy, they have nothing to do with reality.
So do we not?
We have a land, we have an approved landscaping plan that was approved by the city biologist and by the fire department.
Okay.
What's the number?
I looked at that the last time we looked at this, and I had the same thought then. I, honestly, I didn't look at it this time, because I thought, oh, I've had that thought already. Uh, no, that's.
In the back of the 11 by 17s on LS1 is the landscape plan.
So.
So where do you see juniper trees?
They were on the north side, they're, okay, they're, yeah, they're not listed here now. They're just, you're right, okay, it's eye candy.
So this is what we're approving, is this?
Yes.
Just guarantee us, when you, whatever landscape you put up there, you will.
Yeah.
You saw the fire go through, you understand that it went and stuffed it.
Yeah, my whole property.
Not going to put your house back in fire, so.
Yeah.
Long as you, long as you keep that in front of your.
Sure.
Top process, that'd be good.
Community priorities have, have adapted in the last six months, so, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else?
I have a comment.
Okay, John, go ahead.
We continue to see houses where the basement would daylight, except we get a series of planters built in front of it. And I don't think that's what the basement ordinance contemplated. Basically, the house ends up the same height, and we've got cement walls with plants growing out of the top of them, which essentially is the same as a house. So I would hope that at some point we address that. And I move for approval of the project.
Do, I want to go back and take a, sorry, go ahead, you're up first.
There is one concern brought up earlier that I'd like to make sure we address, and that's the, the, the condition that was changed.
For the gate, I agree, that's what I was just going to be stopping before you got.
Well, I was going to put that in, and it seems to me like it's up to the MRCA to open it.
So we want to keep.
Right.